Discussion within our committee as to whether or not we are going to participate in school If there's no discussion, then we need to make a motion as to whether or not we are going to participate. So if we decline to participate in school choice, we need to make a motion to withdraw from that program.
Yes, we withdraw from school choice and we have to include a reason for withdrawal. School districts may consider, for example, class sizes. There's a whole list.
Can you drop your thoughts on that?
Yep.
So in past years, we've taken into consideration both the financial environment of the town, you know, where we're at, whether or not we would be able to afford frankly to have other students join our district. Also, class size, as Dr. Peru had mentioned. So in the past, we've had conversations about how we're very lucky here in Halifax that we have small class sizes and some of our larger grades. It wouldn't be beneficial to our students or frankly, our staff and teachers to bring on more students from out of district. We also have the ability to open up school choice for a specific grade level. So if we find that like one of our grade levels is really on a smaller size and we could benefit from having more students in our building, we have the ability to do that also. So that's something you may want to ensure.
Remind me if we actually, do we get reimbursed for the actual cost per student?
It's a fraction of what it actually costs. So off the top of my head, I believe it's like a $5,000 reimbursement, but we actually end up spending, I want to say $12,000 to $14,000 per student. So the district would pick up the remaining balance. So considering the finances of the town, it would be a hardship for us, in my opinion, to allow for school choice.
Is that a good enough reason, financial hardship?
Potential financial hardship.
Yeah. Because that's my concern, I mean, I think we could. But yeah, no, I mean, if there's, I would say, you know, if there was a financial benefit, then I would be more open to it, but we don't really need to listen to ourselves too much than you.
Also, we don't know, you know, as we've seen over the years, we've had a growth in our special education budget and sometimes it can negatively impact our regular day budget and there's no, we don't know what kind of needs the students are going to bring to the district when they choose Halifax as their home. So that's also something to consider because it might not be just a small financial impact.
I have a final question. It seems like if benefits the school, someone chooses to go to another district because we only have to pay $5,000. I'm not saying, you know, if other schools have school choice.
There's also October 1st enrollment that goes into the Formula Four schools and things of that nature. So again, there are other ways that the receiving district may benefit from increased numbers of students. Again, it depends upon your community's needs and much of this reform. But what the school receives is $5,000 per student. There are special considerations given for special education needs, but not to the extent that it would necessarily cover all of the students' needs.
So I need a motion to, if, I need a motion to either participate in school choice or not participate. And if we are not going to participate, then we need a reason in the motion.
I'll make a motion to not participate in school choice due to financial reasons.
Hang on a second.
One second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I neglected to thank Area 58 for filming today, so thank you for being here. And with that, we can adjourn the school choice hearing and commence our regular meeting, which is always started with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would anybody in the audience like to be acknowledged or scheduled to speak at this time? Okay, taking no participation. We need to vote the regular minutes of March 6, 2003. All seven. Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Okay. Flyer discussion and possible vote for Silver Lake Hoops, Kingston Youth Sports, and Silver Lake Youth Football.
So in your flyer, there are three separate flyers, Silver Lake Hoops, Kingston Youth Sports, Silver Lake Youth Football. Although they say Silver Lake or Kingston Youth, they're not necessarily affiliated with Silver Lake Regional School District, just so that you're aware. They are affiliated with the towns in which the students from the towns often participate. We have advertised for these programs in the past in our schools and they are looking for your support in including those in distribution through the elementary school again this year.
Do you need two separate votes or three separate votes? Do you need only two or three flyers?
We need one.
One, that's fine, okay. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the distribution of the flyer for Silver Lake Hoops and Kingston Youth Sports, Silver Lake Youth Football.
I'll make a motion to distribute the flyer for Silver Lake Hoops, Kingston Youth Sports, Silver Lake Youth Football.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Warrants are sitting in front of me and it will be circulating. Do you have a single signature date?
Well, I have a total for the warrants totaling $583,423.29.
Excellent, thank you. Our business manager is enjoying her vacation, so she's not here tonight. School committee correspondence and reports. The only correspondence that I've received was from our fellow committee member, Jim Keegan. He has submitted his letter of resignation from the committee, so he will not be fulfilling his final year that would complete his term on the school committee. So his position is open on the ballot in the spring. So we regret to inform everyone that he will be resigning from the committee. Other than that, I don't have anything to report.
Did I, I'm sorry, did I miss the date? As a mention, as a?
It's, he's done election day.
So it's up to 13?
I believe so, but I have not seen that in writing. So he had a discussion with the town clerk and verbally told me that and was going to put it in writing with the clerk's office. So far, I haven't seen an updated letter. Have you?
No.
Okay.
So the spot is on the ballot for the resignation heading? I just didn't want to?
New business, I don't have any future agenda items. I don't have any unless anyone else does. Didn't see something in the email about, or was that the flyer?
There was another flyer that wasn't on this agenda. It's from Boston University for another opportunity, but we can add that to the next agenda.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just painted my brain and did not know what to follow or new business, but it can Subcommittee's policy, they have not met since our last meeting negotiations. The only time we met was to establish ground rules with the parent professionals, but we have an executive session on the agenda for the end of today, but I don't think we're going to need it because we haven't had any formal negotiation sessions that are warrant a discussion with the committee at this time. Pat? Jim? I don't know if it's Karen. So Jim is also using rec and I asked him for an update and he can have one for either. PTO?
So for the PTO meeting, they talked about the upcoming book fair, which has passed and is another great and successful book fair. I was pleased to see there was lots of books available. I know a couple of them last year that they were, felt that they were a little shy of the number of cases they had. So that was great. They're also doing a fundraiser for HES apparel as well, including, I think they opted to purchase apparel for the custodians. Is that how I can tell you?
I don't know specifics.
The majority of the meeting was surrounding funding for field trips, really significant cost increase for bussing, especially for field trips. And there was discussion around the equity of doing, you know, allotting a certain amount of funding per grade versus per pupil because some grades have 60 students and some grades have 105 students. So there was discussion about trying to be creative in the funding, how much funding was going to cost. And then Mr. DeSantis had suggested that maybe Mr. Bodry could be creative in some of this funding. Did that end up happening? And emails you guys wondering if you were able to help with some of that funding for the field trips?
I'm not sure where it would come from. I said, I mean, I wouldn't.
Yeah, Mr. DeSantis had said there was some funds available for school purposes that could be, fall under the umbrella of field trips, that they could help alleviate some of the costs. And then one of the trips, the fifth grade trip, was especially expensive. So I'm not sure exactly. The next meeting is the 12th, so I can obviously follow up on that, but I know, I feel like there's a lot of discussion around making sure the kids get to go out and about and have a valuable, meaningful experience outside of the building. But there was a lot of concern about whether or not logistically that was going to happen. Time's getting close enough to you because they've got to be able to know what they have for funding and then plan the trip that have it actually happened. So that was the majority of the discussion. Again, we look forward to hearing how things pan out with that with all the teachers. That's all.
Thank you. Capital budget, has not met, had no review. Did you ask me or you had a meeting schedule?
May 4th and May 11th, we have, oh, May 4th is the next scheduled one that I will be present for. I think the administrative committee will be reaching out with some other potential dates. At least last time I met with the chair, Jason Frazier, who said he was going to be communicating and working with Karen to get some dates.
Okay. Do you have anything else to ask?
No, I just literally met on March 23rd. Right? Wasn't that how they met? Was that a different place?
We did.
Now, was to go over your, the mid-year review?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. And for going review, there's no update. Union 31, always get these online. Did we meet between last meeting and this one? Okay. Chris Bodry?
Correct. We've got, let's see, and of course I put it off the top of it, our enrollment right now is 559 students, K-6. MCAS kicks off tomorrow for grade five for ELA and then again, we'll follow up on Wednesday with the second day of testing. And then in there, next week, we are working with grade six and grade four and then after vacation, we work grade three for ELA. And then in May, we look to have the math and science forecast. So we send out a reminder, make sure our fifth graders get to bed early tonight, breakfast, and show up to school on time because we kick off at 8:45. So we're hoping that everybody will be ready to go. We have our school council survey. Actually, the numbers that we have are, we're looking at over a 70% response rate, which is really good. So we're excited that our school council meets tomorrow and so we'll be analyzing those results from the survey and we'll work on that for our school improvement plan. So that response rate is pretty huge, so we're excited to have it up at that high.
Can I ask you a question? What exactly is it? Like it's the students reaching out to other students to see like what they'd like to see?
No, it's the school council. Every couple of years, what we do is we put together a survey that we send out to families and that it's about what, it's about climate in the building, it's about the effectiveness of our staff and the relationships that we're building here in the school. And it's all designed around our strategy for district improvement. So just at the building level.
Okay.
And so we ask for feedback on how we're doing and areas that we can improve. Our school council looks at those results and then we kind of build our goals for the next year. I'm not sure of the results.
Is the kids' school council or the?
No, the student council. The student council with.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. That's what I was thinking, that's what I was asking. Okay.
I know, I always go back and forth with those two as well. But this is school council, so it's myself and Brian, parents and a community member and then we have two teachers on there as well. So we look at the results and then we work on things like that. And then also, we're looking at any revisions to our handbook and we want to bring it forward to the committee.
Cool.
We'll share the results.
So for the survey, so when I was on school council, I actually never saw the results of that survey. I know there was a lot of transition coming back from COVID years, but do you still have? We did survey, it looked very similar to the one that you just gave.
Right.
Do you still have those results?
Yep.
So are you going to look at like trends? Are you going to look at the last survey, which I guess was two years ago now, right?
The school council reviewed that, yeah.
Look at both.
Yep.
And are the public and or the school committee for any of those results? Absolutely.
I can do a summary report. We can do that. We can put together something that you guys want to see.
Okay. Can you include that in your report for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Awesome, thank you.
Book fair, we had during conferences, the week fair, we had raised, was almost $15,000 from the PTO book fair, which is a huge dollar amount. And the PTO generously bought a book for every kindergarten through fourth grade student. So thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. Then we have our, each year, we send out our student placement feedback form for parents for when we're placing students. So our placement teams are starting up right now before the end of the school year. So we send out a survey for families if they have any, if they want to share any input in terms of where their student would benefit from being best possible environment for next year. We don't take teacher requests, but we look for some feedbacks in terms of how their child learns best and if there's any particular friendships or whatever, any details that our placement team will know, then we share that with the placement team and we can use that information for when we place students. So we'll be sending that out shortly. So we'll take a look at it.
Okay, I was sort of related to that. I was just wondering, in general, so thinking about student placement for next year, what is like the rationale around teacher placement, like moving teachers from a grade area to another? And when do they get notified about that? And is there any sort of input from teachers on whether or not they want to be moved to different grade levels? And it seems like there's a lot of movement, so I don't know what the rationale was for that.
No, thanks for the question. We, each year, we send out a survey to teachers as well, you know, if they have any inkling for wanting to move to a different grade level or subject area. And we kind of, Brian and I look at it and we weigh the options of where, which teacher teams might be more impactful than others. And we are always looking to kind of put those puzzle pieces together. So that's, and every year, it's, you know, we try not to shake things up too much, but we have a lens that we're wearing all the classrooms throughout the building. So it's, a lot of times, what we can, we see things that maybe some other people don't see. So I think it's really just kind of looking at as a whole picture, how we can create those teacher teams across grade levels and across the building.
So it would be based partly on like teacher requests, but then partly on what you see as needs of the grade level?
Yep.
Like area expertise, anything like that, or just?
That could be part of it.
Yeah. And then how, like, so if a teacher is told that they need to move grade level, enhance, pack up their entire classroom and also learn an entirely curriculum or curricula, depending on the grade level, right? So do they get any help or time with that versus a teacher that gets just kind of just coast back in the next year and be good to go? How does that work for them? The teachers have to?
In terms of?
Time? I don't know. How and when are they able to pull that off to be able to?
It's just really just good teaching is reflecting on your practice and always looking at the standards and always kind of finding ways to improve yourself. And I find the teachers that have taught multiple grades that they're usually pretty much more impactful than teaching one grade, you know, for the time. So we find that, you know, we have a elementary curriculum coordinator that's also available and we make sure that our teachers are always collaborating with each other. We give teachers time to kind of work with each other in the same grade level or others so that they can do that.
I just think people are wanting to have to learn an entirely curriculum, not learn. I mean, I know they know the content, but to learn how to teach like that skillful piece of being able to teach, you know, the first time you teach it, it's shaky at best and then you get better and better, obviously, as you know, every time you teach it. So I just think that's a lot for them to have to bear that. And then what about like the time, literally packing their rooms? Like is there any help or time for them?
Custodians help, absolutely. They always lend a helping hand. And it's just like when they're packing their rooms at the end of the year, it's kind of part of the process, whether you keep it in the room or you tag it and say, move to room 115.
Right, yeah, then it needs to be. Do they pack up their whole room every, at the end of the year, every year?
Yep. Because the custodians come in and they clean everything from head to toe. So it's, yes, and we take everything down off the walls. So they're packing up, yeah, it's not ideal to relocate your things to other places in the building. But, you know, we're always striving to kind of push ourselves and our team here collectively. So I think that's been in my experiences that, you know, when we have teachers that are, have taught multiple grades and multiple areas, they're a lot of times more impactful in the classroom by having different experiences at different grade levels. I know that worked for me and I know that it worked for Brian as well, teaching, you know, when I taught third grade and then I also taught fourth and sixth grade. So made me a better teacher teaching multiple grade levels. So that's kind of what we're seeing here. And I think that we saw that the teachers that were moved, I think definitely had a pretty significant impact, you know, in the classroom.
I'm assuming it's in here somewhere. What is the date that they, is it in their contract, the date that they have to be informed by?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But is there, there is one? Or, because I just think that's something that we should consider, making sure that teachers are ready to return and they know where they're at. Is there, do you know, is there a date?
I feel like this is walking a very fine line into a negotiation conversation that we should not be having right now, frankly.
I'm not, I'm just curious. I'm talking about placement for next year, so I'm wondering if the teachers know.
So and I assume the date is in here, so I was just curious, but. That's why I'm making a conversation. I was wondering if there was a date that they need to be informed by.
This was just student placement I was sharing.
Oh, yeah, but that's obviously because relative to placement in general, thank you on next year. So, okay. So we don't know about a date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that the end of your update?
Just some dates in there. Some dates. School council meeting tomorrow, no school on Friday, spring vacation coming up on the 17th. We welcome everyone back on the 24th. Our next school committee meeting is on May 8th.
Thank you. So next is Christine Healy with our financial report, but she is not here tonight because as I mentioned before, she's enjoying her vacation. But she did include the financial in our packet, so I'm sure if anybody has any questions, you can feel free to email her. And I hope she doesn't respond while she's on vacation, although I bet she does. I feel like she would too. But, you know, we can always follow up with her at our next meeting. And that was so much.
Thank you. So I just have a quick update on our elementary leadership team meeting as part of curriculum instruction and assessment. So on March 16th, we continued our focus on our 70% achievement goal and we had that meeting here at Halifax Elementary, Principal Bodry and Assistant Principal DeSantis. They played a leadership role in our session by sharing their data wall and the way in which they track student growth and achievement over the course of the year. These are Dibbles data, Star reading and Star math. They do a great job with the visual display and then assessing not just achievement, but how are students progressing over the course of the year. We thought that was great to share with all of our elementary principals because data analysis is a key part of student growth and we really appreciate Principal Bodry and Assistant Principal DeSantis helping to model this important leadership element. So just a quick update on curriculum instruction and assessment.
I do have one quick question.
Sure.
And you may not be able to answer it. It might be one that's better for our curriculum coordinator, but I know that in the past, we've used different assessment tools and we've sort of taken a step back and analyzed whether or not the assessment tool that we are using is the best gauge of our student growth and development. Do you find now that using the Dibbles and the Star, I feel like we've gotten really good feedback just from the administrative team on those assessment tools? Does that still seem to be like the case moving forward where we're not, are we looking to use other tools or are we pretty comfortable with what we've established now? I'm just curious.
Yes, really good question and I think one of the, I would, we continually evaluate to make sure that we're getting good data on our student skills. Obviously, where our students have to take MCAS, so that's one piece of data, but it's not very usable in the course of the year because kids only do it once. But one of the things that was done here at Halifax, which is effective, is taking the student's performance on the MCAS, but then also comparing that to Star, Star math and Star reading. And we found through the data analysis that we did on the 16th, that there's a pretty good correlation. So from that meeting, I would say that we do feel at this time, based on your question, we do feel pretty comfortable with Star math and Star reading, two through six, second grade through sixth grade. We use Dibbles in the earlier grades to assess.
That's a fairly new program.
It's been around for a little while. It's sort of like.
Running for us.
Oh.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, like teachers and teachers conferences that share negative progress.
So I'd say those two are pretty standard. We keep, we're looking for an effective math assessment for early elementary, but, and we also need to think about science. But if your question, your question was like, do we feel comfortable with Star? I think we do and we also tested the data to make sure it was effective and we'll continue to try to add things that give us information about the curriculum, but those I think are working well for us and I think they, the leadership team here critically compared the MCAS data to the Star data. And if we ever discover it's not matching up well, then maybe we book it into assessments by just making me feel good about how to use it. We could also grow a little bit more in helping teachers to access the data and making sure they feel comfortable with it because they're the ones that can have the biggest influence on.
on improving it, because they directly work with the student, so, yeah, I think we feel pretty good about where that information is now, and we're even thinking about ways next year to make it even easier for principals and teachers to access it, since we collect it and the kids sit for it, so we're really interested in using that information to make sure that we're keeping track of every kid's progress so that we can support them.
Awesome. This is kind of, I feel like a stupid question, but does that data travel with the child to the next grade level, and like, is there a line of communication between like, let's say, third and fourth, I would assume that there is, but between like third and fourth grade, where the teacher, sort of the fourth grade teacher can see where the third kid was in third grade and sort of keep an eye on areas that they might feel the child needs to improve on, or...
Yes, good question, it's technically possible. Maybe Mr. Bowdre can speak a little bit more to about the procedures followed at Halifax, like how you shared.
Yeah, so definitely it follows, so when we start doing STAR data in second grade, it's a little dicey in second grade, because it's the first time we did take it, but we compare their spring STAR scores, the fall STAR scores, but the spring MCAS scores from the year before, and we're finding that the data is pretty much like spot on. But in, in, we continue to keep it from year to year, so it's in Power School, and then it's also in their HUM folders for the standardized testing that we have for MCAS, but we can go back and track the data for the student test scores in STAR and Dibbles and MCAS. It's all in there.
Awesome. Thanks.
And we just, we normally just try and see the, the spring to fall, from the previous year to the next year, because sometimes there's a little bit of a dip over the summer, but that's where, that's where usually teachers will start, is like see where they were at the end of the year previous, and then to the fall score, and then kind of go from there and kind of talk about it, move the needle and get the students to the goal, I mean. Better at it?
Yeah. Anything else for Mr. Lunch before we move on? Thank you, Brian.
So, if you recall, we had a vote for our school committee meetings, and one of the things that was brought up as we presented this to each of our school committees was the joint meeting date. It was originally scheduled for February 8th next year, that's the same night as the Silver Lake meeting, and we have found that some years, there's a lot to discuss in the joint meeting and other years, not as much. So rather than have that conflict, we are proposing changing that one date to February 15th instead. So I'm asking for the Halifax school committee to vote to amend the school committee meeting schedule, to change the joint meeting date to February 15th.
Seems reasonable. It's a lot to have faculty like this and that.
No, me, we're in prime time, but...
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve changing the joint meeting date on February 8th, February 15th on the school calendar. Sorry, I don't know what to say.
All's in favor?
Aye.
The second item that I'd like to ask for your consideration and possible vote is that we shared the school calendar with you. After we shared and you voted the school calendar, one of the towns communicated with us that there is an election March 5th in the town. And as you know, we use Halifax and we also use Kingston Elementary as voting sites, so we'd like to ask that the school committee change the calendar from the February in-service day to March 5th in order to accommodate voting on that day. So the students wouldn't have class on March 5th, but the teachers could still have their in-service day as planned. So we had originally planned it for at the end of February break on that Monday. We're asking for that to be changed to March 5th. There's an updated calendar in the packet with that date highlighted. That is the one date we would ask you to change. It is very hard to have students in school and have an election taking place at the same time.
Can we, like, move it forward, or, I know we moved it for the general election, but even if it's not a primary year, can we keep, keep that March PD day instead?
It may not be a bad idea, especially considering what we're finding out. So we'll, we'll see how it goes this year and we'll come back to you if there's any reason why we couldn't keep it. We would present our, our reasons for why we would prefer not to, but again, there's not that big of a difference between the end of February and March 5th, so I can't see why that would be an issue.
What say, do you think it's nice to not have the kids in the school on the election day?
Yeah, and like after vacation, I'm ready to send the kids back to school on Monday, so like, let's not, to be honest here.
I'll make a motion to change the professional development or development date or in-service day from the first Monday of February after vacation to March 5th.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that's it for tonight?
Excellent. Well, before we adjourn, I don't believe we need an executive session, so we just need to adjourn our regular meeting. On April 7th is the Friday, so there's no school. April 13th is our joint meeting. Do you have a time and a location for that? I'm assuming 6 o'clock, but is it at the middle or the high school?
So the April 13th was...
Or is it virtual?
Was canceled and moved to May, I think it was May 8th, is that what they did, Karen?
Oh, May 8th is our, is our town meeting.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm thinking of the wrong, sorry.
What, you can't keep track of each other?
In my calendar, I can. So let's see. May 18th.
So the April 13th is our, is moved to May 18th?
So April 13th is canceled completely?
Yeah, it moved to May 18th instead, per the request of the chairs.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we will have a new commit, we'll have several new committees by then?
That could be.
Okay, all right. And April 17th through 21st is April vacation, so there's obviously no school then. And May 8th is our next school committee meeting, which we usually have prior to town meeting. And that's it.
So we have a meeting before, we have a meeting...
Sometimes we'll have like a short meeting before a town meeting, depending on if there's any changes to the budget and things like that. We may not need to physically meet, we might just be a forum at town meeting.
Okay.
So we have to post, as you noted earlier. So with that, I just need a motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second? All right, all's in favor?
Aye.
Bye.